Alright, according to the MAC book, just to my immediate left, the time has just come over to 7:30, so we'll go ahead and we'll proceed with the meeting. So I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Village of Skokie Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning board of appeals is created by the statutes of the state of Illinois and by the ordinances of the Village of Skokie for the purpose of granting proper case relief from the strict terms of our zoning ordinances. The decision of this board to either grant or deny relief will be based upon the evidence presented to it and how that evidence is related to the standards for granting relief. All persons who have an interest in a case, either as a petitioner or as a member of the public, either supporting or opposing the petition, or as an independent witness, will be given a chance to speak on record and to express his or her points of view. The zoning board of appeals is not a court of law, and therefore, we do not follow the strict rules of evidence. However, this hearing will be conducted in such a manner as to hear only competent evidence or statements. Questions as to procedure, interpretation, and of the admissibility of statements or evidence will be ruled upon by Corporation Counsel Tyler Kobelski, and his legal decisions will be binding upon this board. Certain cases require covenant running with the land. This will be prepared and recorded by the Village of Skokie Legal Department, and this is done at the petitioner's expense. Whether or not a covenant is required is a determination to be made by the Corporation Counsel at the conclusion of each individual case. If a covenant running with the land is required, it cannot or will not be prepared until our court reporter has returned to the Zoning Board of Appeals a transcript of these proceedings. The Village of Skokie will notify each petitioner when the covenant has been prepared and is ready for signature. No building permits can be applied for or issued until the covenant is signed by the petitioner. Should a petition for variation be denied, or should covenant not be required, the Board of Trustees will authorize a refund of any required fees. Should it be necessary for the petitioner to request a continuance due to lack of preparation, a case continuation fee of one-half of the original application fee is due prior to the rehearing date. This request must be made before any testimony begins. All petitioners must receive a vote of the majority of the zoning board present in order to decide any matter under consideration. Our full complement is nine members, however, tonight's complement is eight members, making five votes necessary to make a determination on a petition. Since we do not have a full board complement, you are entitled to see continuation of your case. But, this case must be requested, this request must be made before testimony begins. Once testimony begins before this board having less than its full complement, no appeal or rehearing will be granted on these grounds. So tonight, we have one case on our agenda, and it's 2018-03Z, 3825 Brummel Street, a variation to maintain. And, let's see, in that case, I will ask Corporation Counsel, has proper notice been served and notarized?
Notice is proper and correct.
Okay, thank you very much. In tonight's packet, among other things, we have the minutes from our last meeting on March 21st. I take it that all members of the zoning board have had a chance to review these notes that were compiled for the meeting, which, and if, if somebody from the board would like to open, to, I'm, the chair is open to a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Alright, Commissioner Franklin, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, Commissioner Gerson, all in favor, please say aye, voice vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anybody opposed? No? Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. To our court reporter, Inca, that was there that night, not Marley. Okay. Okay. So we'll go ahead and we'll move forward with the case tonight. If the, if petitioners would like to step up to the podium, well, we have, Commissioner Shaw is the presenter of the case tonight. So, Mike, go ahead, take it away to floor, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number 2018-03Z, 3825 Brummel Street. 3825 Brummel LLC, managed by Paul R. Ojaski, requests a variation in order to maintain a 28-foot, 9-inch tall building rather than 28-foot maximum as required by Section 118-112 3B of zoning chapter of the Skokie Village Code in R2 Single Family District. I have a petitioner's statement addressed to Village of Skokie Zoning Board of Appeal, Community Development Department, Building and Zoning Division, reference to a petition for a variance, building height above district limit, 3825 Brummel Street. Zoning Board Member, we request the variation of 9 inches to the overall as build height of the single-family residence located at the address at street above. The increase in the height is due to the settlement of the parameter of grade all the base of the building. The requested 9-inch variation is a minimum 2.6% increase to the zoning code, maximum allowable height for R2 district. The request for this variance, if granted, will not be injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare. We have attached a copy of the result of the Skokie Appearance Commission dated February 14, 2018 for your review, and signed by Paul R. Ojaski. It's from a builder construction company, I think is their president.
Okay.
And, it's no report anything from Engineering Department.
Mike, if you would, just in, the staff report, since the petitioner makes reference to the Appearance Commission, you want to read the Appearance Commission results?
The Appearance Commission reviewed the approval of the petitioner's request twice. The first approval was at the, it's August 10, 2016 hearing. The approval elevation had a building height of 28 feet. The Appearance Commission reviewed and approved the petitioner revised elevation at its February 14, 28 hearing. The request was approved with the following condition and comment. Allowing the as build height 28-foot, 9-inch, and subject to Zoning Board of Appeal approval.
Okay, that's, that's good. I think we can move forward with that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Could you please tell us your name and spell it so we may have it for the record?
I'm Paul Orzieske, last name O-R-Z-E-S-K-E.
Okay, thank you, sir. And if you would, if I may swear in, since you're at the podium, do you affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge or belief?
I do.
Alright, great, thank you very much. Then go ahead, Paul, please tell us why we're here tonight.
The original proposal or design, which is back in 17, excuse me, 16, had a height of 30 feet, one and an inch, one and one-half inches. Clearly, we misinterpret the zoning code height. We then came back and revised it to 28 feet to the, to the top of the ridge of the, of the proposed home. In the process, we've had inspections on the construction as per the construction documents. At the time, I want to say it was back in September or October, there was a question, do we have, are we within the height limitations? At that time, I believe we were. At that time, the grade around the perimeter of the building was still uneven because of the perimeter drain that was installed. It was kind of difficult to get a clear understanding of the finished height. I believe in January this year, 13th, we had an inspection with Mr. Clacco and Mr. Seles from the Building Department. They both went inside of the building, up to the, for lack of a better term, attic space, measured all the way down to the northeast corner of the house, and they actually came up with a dimension of 28 feet, 6 inches, not 28 feet, 9 inches. I, we can't get that information to everyone, but the proposal came out where the height is 28 feet, 9 inches. 28 feet, 9 inches was actually my measurement, made on the back of the house, with a tape measure from grade going up to the underside of the ridge. Albeit 6 or 9 inches, we are over the 28-foot dimension. I, I maintain that that is simply because of the perimeter grade that we installed has compacted, because of, we recall last year, we did have a lot of rain at the end of the year. We did, we did put in approximately 8 inches of topsoil plus, plus sod. It did compact. We are still planning on putting more fill on the west side of the building, because you can actually see the window wells. I necessarily don't want to see the window wells for our final product, and we do, we do intend to raise the level of grade slightly. Will we come up to 28 feet? No. Will we be 28 feet, 9 inches? In some places, yes, some places, less, which is the actual dimension that the village came up with. So right now, we're looking at a variation of roughly, if you want, 9 inches, 6 inches, to incorporate the final product, the final house design, final construction.
Alright. Well, we heard from petitioner, Commissioner Shaw, would you like to give us your impressions on this case, please?
So are you the owner, or are you the investor?
I am the owner, I'm the architect, and the general contractor.
So are you planning to stay in the house?
No, this is an investment property.
So you got a permit for 28 foot, now how did you come up with 28.6, or 28.9?
It was, it was designed, it was built at 28 feet. That's what I maintain, because we measured several times. Unfortunately, the perimeter of the house, because of the perimeter drain that we installed, we dug down 8 feet, we compacted the back fill, the crushed gravel, and the topsoil as well. Unfortunately, when it rains, it does compact. We're roughly 6 inches, the 9 inches, greater than the 28-foot maximum.
I'm sure you have insurance, right? Or are you the contractor, so?
Builder's insurance, yes, and homeowner's insurance, yes.
The builder insurance.
Correct.
And also, you are bonded?
No.
I have a question.
Yeah, if, are you done, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Salvi.
Hi, I just have a question. When did you first realize that there was a discrepancy in the measurement?
There was, excuse me, I'm sorry. The, there was a question of it, I want to say in September, but again, we did not have finished grade. The actual measurement, measurement was taken by the village in January of this year, after the roof was installed.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Mr. Ojaski, I do have a question for you. You mentioned that, of course, you know, that the discrepancy that we're here about today was because of what was done with drainage. If there was grade differences from the original approved plans, why didn't a revised plan get submitted to staff for review?
Based on the inspection on, in January, or, I'm not, I'm not following the question.
Well, it's, if, if what happened, what, if what happened as a result of us being here tonight, it was something that they called you on and said, look, you have this difference from 28 feet, which is the original submitted plan, and now all of a sudden we're measuring it to 26, or to 28 feet, 9 inches, 28 feet, 6 inches, whatever the, you know, whatever the overage is that makes us here tonight. But it could have been possible for you to submit a revised plan to address this, rather than staff going out and saying, look, why, why did you build above height? In, in other words, could you have been more proactive in, in working with staff on this?
After the 28-foot, 9-inch, 6-inch dimension was determined, yes, we went back and we talked to the village and how to, how to move forward on the possibility of getting a variance. I didn't know if there, I still don't know if there's another way to actually work with the village on the differentiation between the 6 and the 9, and, and the 9 inches or whatever dimension over the overall height. I thought this was the only avenue to address the situation, going in front of the Appearance Board, and then in getting a variance. If there's another avenue, I, I'm not aware of it, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for petitioner?
Not the petitioner, I have this.
Or question, question for staff?
I just have a statement.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Gerson.
This is kind of similar to what we looked at last year. There, we have a zoning ordinance that says 28 feet, and if we set a precedent, then we cannot, then if we set a precedent and approve something like this, then the next person that comes that wants a 29-foot, we have to give, and it comes a 30-foot, we have to give, and then pretty soon, we have a 50-foot building in a 28-foot residential unit. So, just remember that in setting precedents on voting on something like this. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank, Commissioner Gerson. Yeah, Commissioner Hurd.
You know, I, Alan, I just wanted to say that, you know, I have seen instances, you know, where there were something very similar, that we did approve for one and didn't approve for the other. I mean, legally, as a zoning board, just because we give it to one person, doesn't mean we have to give it to everyone based on the circumstances of the case.
We have not given a height.
Well, I'm not, you, I don't, were you referring just to height?
I was just referring to height.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Okay, maybe it's me, but I'm not getting the physics of this. When houses settle, don't they usually settle down, rather than settling up?
It's not the house that's settling, it's the perimeter grade, the fill.
Right, and so that, what, that goes underneath and pushes the house up?
No, no, it's not underneath. We didn't undercut the footings. It's where you take the actual vertical dimension at the perimeter of the house, because it's settled.
Oh, so you're measuring from a higher point?
We're measuring from the roof of the apex of the, the ridge line of the, of the roof, down to grade. And because the grade is compacted, it gets a, it gets a taller height.
And I also wanted to comment on the last statement, that I would think that every case is different, and I, I would hope that no case is, is a gateway to, to permissiveness, and that every case is settled on its merit. Whether we agree, grant this or don't grant this, I don't think we're obligated to grant the next one if the circumstances are completely different, and we definitely have done things that exact opposite on one case and another.
I'm not saying that we haven't, that we've given variance on zoning. I'm talking about height restrictions, and only height restrictions. And that is something that you have to be very careful in setting a precedence on. The, the other grandfathering in and things like that is one thing. Height restrictions is a whole different ballgame. So, we have to be very, very, very careful on height restrictions.
Okay. Any other questions? Because if not, I'd, I'd actually like to, yeah.
I want to ask Brian if he would like to suggest anything to, for the petitioner, if he can correct this violation with minimal hits cost.
I don't know if I'd have an open suggestion. It's, it's, the building is sited.
Yes.
What's the, what's the height from the siding to the grade currently, approximately? What's the difference?
It varies between 6 to 9 inches, depending. It's more, it's greater on the west side than on the east.
And in the building code for a sited house, typically, it would be, grade would be 6 inches below the siding, correct?
6, but that's based on a wood-sited house.
And would it be 4 inches?
It doesn't, doesn't, and that's because you're keeping the siding away from grade for obvious rot or pest.
Right, right.
And just for the record, this is a hardy board, cement siding.
So if you were at 4 inches below, what would the approximate height be?
Either 28-foot 2, or 28-foot 5.
Depending on where, what portion of, what portion of the, what portion of the are you to measure at? Besides working with engineering and the building department regarding getting a new elevation, getting a new grading plan to get an, to get the approval at 4 inches, from bottom of siding to grade at all points, other than that, without, other than that, you're talking reconstructing the roof. I don't know what else could be done besides possible some regrading, meeting the building code requirement, and having engineering give the okay on a regrading plan, but if the building code allows, the building code's not my expertise, but if the building code does allow 4 inches, regrading to get it to the 4-inch mark, if that's dependent on the, I think we adopted a 2012 International Residential Code with amendments. If that works, and you could get it to where everything is 4 inches, then we are looking at knocking that height down a few inches.
Correct.
They'd have to work with engineering and building to, with the regrade, with the, engineering with a regrading plan, and then submit revised elevations showing that type of siding 4 inches above grade, if the building code allows it, to keep the existing structure as is. Other than that, with the grading, I don't think there's anything else that can be done without reconstructing the roof.
Okay, now I think I understand. So, basically, if you raise the ground, the roof gets closer, so the-
Correct.
So basically, the height isn't really changing, it's the, the building is still the same, it's just the dip from the, it's ground to the ground.
Yeah, well, yeah, the measurement is taken from the surrounding grade.
Right, but I'm saying, the building isn't getting taller or-
Correct.
More obstructive in any way, it's just the, 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 the distance to the ground.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, again, depend, you, you don't want to grade it too high and have issues with, like, with, Derek said, with rot or-
View obstruction.
Right.
Which doesn't make any difference.
Correct, you're talking slight gradings, that can change the building. The building will still be taller than the code requirement, though.
Any other questions for staff or petitioner at this time? Just, just something I'd like to, to bring up. When the, when the drawings were originally submitted, you went to the full 28-foot height, correct?
Well, the original was, was over, then we came back revised to 28 feet.
Okay, alright. Which is the maximum allowable by village code?
Correct.
So in other words, you left no room for error?
Actually, we were designing for 27 and 11, an inch, so, yes, it was still tight.
Right, an inch difference.
Yeah, the approved plans, I believe, were at 28 feet.
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, I, I, as they, as they say, baseball's a game of inches, and, you know, one inch one way, or an inch another way can be the difference between a ball and a strike. And I, I don't want to put it in such basic terms, but the analogy couldn't be more comparable, I think, in this particular instance, so. Anybody else have a question for petitioner or staff?
I just have.
Yeah, Commissioner Salvi.
I just want to make sure about this, I know it's maybe redundant, but you did intend to build it to the correct height, to 28 feet. That was your intention, your honest intention?
There's no, no, there was no intent here to go beyond 28 feet. There's no material benefit that we get out of this. We're here in front of the zoning board. Again, this is, unfortunately or fortunately, it is an honest, honest mistake.
Okay, thank you.
I see, I like, I see a lot of gesticulating and a lot of comments being made over here. Is there any, anything else that, anybody else that would like to question the petitioner or staff? Any, anybody else? Any closing statement that you'd like to make, Mr. Ojaski?
I, I understand the, the, the need not to set a precedent. I, I get that. I'm, I'm on the Architectural Review Board for Lincolnshire. I understand that perspective. But again, as the gentleman just asked, was there intent to do this? Of course not. I mean, I get no benefit out of this whatsoever. I run the risk of rebuilding the roof, which is going to be, quite frankly, a severe financial hardship here, which we're not going to be able to incur. I understand the issue of zoning board's position of maintaining health, safety, and welfare of the general public, but we're talking 9 inches here, not to say it's trivial, but again, it is an issue that was made in honest, out in the field. I'm not pointing the finger at anyone else except me, so, that's it.
Well, thank you, thank you for your candor, as far as that's concerned. That is appreciated. Commissioner Shaw, anything else you'd like to say?
No, in the summary, I visited the house last Sunday, it was April 29. Is the existing home is under construction, permit was obtained to construct the second floor and remodel first floor in May 2017. The building permit was approved at 28-foot tall. In that case, where the contractor did not follow the approved permit drawing, and if there were a grade differences from the original approval plan, a revised plan was not submitted for the staff review. And the hardship is clearly self-imposed, and I have to go with the staff report here to deny the variation.
If I may make a statement. The construction plans were followed. There is no deviation with the actual construction details and plans. The issue here is the compaction of the fill at the perimeter. So at that point, yes, it was our, my error on not, not understanding the compaction rate for the perimeter and how that would affect the overall height of the building. But the plans were followed, they were actually inspected and approved. So again, there's just a clarification.
Yeah. And, and again, like I said, you didn't really, didn't leave yourself any room for error in case an instance like this specifically popped up.
Correct.
Um.
Yeah, let's ask, let's ask Jeff about that. We, we realize what the hardship is in this particular instance, you even said so yourself. At this particular time, I'd like to ask staff, is, is there any way possible that petitioner can go and remedy his situation to substantially come within comply, come within compliance at all, or is this, or is this just a pipe dream?
Without rebuilding the roof?
Without rebuilding the roof, correct.
The grade, not with the, based on the information provided, my knowledge of the case, we can't get the grade up that high to meet the 28-foot. It's going to be over.
It's going to be only 3, 3 to 4 inches.
Even if it, I think if, if there's some slight regrading that meets the building code requirement and engineering's approval, I, like, with Mr. Ojaski said, I think we can knock it down a couple inches, 2, 3 inches possibly, roughly. knock it down a couple inches, two, three inches possibly, roughly. With some, with some possibly regrading that, with the condition it meets the building code requirement and engine, in our engineering division approval, I think it could be knocked down a couple inches, and in some cases, it won't, it'll be possibly three to four inches over, and in some cases, it might be six to seven. Other than that, or besides that, without, you can't regrade it and meet the height requirement.
Right, right. So, should, so there's really no way to come in within compliance at all?
Without rebuilding the roof, no.
Right, right, okay. All right, that was my question.
I have a question. Is there any possibility, I'm not sure of zoning heights for different zoning locations, with different zones? Is there any possibility of upzoning the lot to, again, I'm not sure what it would be, that would allow for twenty-eight plus, and then downzone after the completion of construction, back to the current zoning?
To rezone the property to R1, single family, the lot would have to be a minimum of fifty-five feet wide, I don't know if it is.
No, it's not.
It's a moot point at that point. Plus, I don't know the legality of a spot zone, it would be an individual lot in the middle of, and R2 district zoned R1, and then rezoning it back to R2, then the building would be non-conforming. So, it's, it's either going to be some slight regrading with meeting the building code and engineering division requirements, with, again, possibly getting it, you know, the grade up a, you know, a couple inches. Rebuilding the roof or approving as is or denying, is my, in my opinion. There's four options. Approve as is, deny, some slight regrading meeting building code and engineering divisions' guidelines and recommendations and codes, or reconstruct the roof.
Commissioner Gerson.
So, Brian, so, you can't raise it to be in compliance, so the building, built as is, was never in compliance then? Even with the compacting and the, and the backfill?
In my opinion, it never was, not at the current height. Was it close, if you, if you regrade it a little bit, it gets closer in some points from, my understanding, yes. It's not going to be twenty-nine six or twenty-nine nine, it'll come closer, I'm sorry, twenty-eight six or twenty-eight nine. It will definitely come closer, depending on what the surrounding, final grade around the building is.
So, the best bet would have been to build it at twenty-seven, and if it were over, then you have some room to play with.
Smaller than what is currently there, yes. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other statements, comments, questions for petitioners or staff? If not, then the chair will entertain a motion. Yes, thank you, thank you. Corporation counsel has just reminded me, we do have people in the audience, so are there any other comments from people in the audience at all that would like to be made?
No, I'm...
She's my wife.
I'm just, I just want to just plead our case.
Right, so, so, no, no comment, in other words?
No, I just, you know, six inches, like, that you could just draw.
Right. I take that as a no then. Okay, all right, if there's nothing else, then the chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Salvi, yes.
I would just like to ask this, could he, can we delay this? Can he meet with staff and see if they could figure out a way to remedy this, so, and maybe he'll come back and, instead of being nine inches, it might be four inches, before we do this, could, is that a possibility at all, you see?
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I, sure. We can meet with the applicant, the building division supervisor, and I would, with the civil engineer, engineering supervisor, go out to the site, see what we could do with the grade, and come up with revised elevation to see if we can knock this number down slightly.
But if I, if I may interject real quick, you, it's your, of your opinion that this building, as was, was never in compliance to begin with?
Correct.
Correct.
Can it be closer if the, if we, if we work on the grading a little bit and it still meets the building code requirements and engineering is satisfied with the proposed grade change, slight, albeit, we can come closer to the height requirement, yes. I don't think, without rebuilding the roof, that we can hit twenty-eight feet, as built.
Right.
I mean, that would seem like a reasonable course to take.
Continuation?
At this point, I'll ask this of the petitioner. Do you, do you feel that this would be something that you'd like to undertake prior to us rendering a final judgment in this situation?
As far as regrading, yes. I mean, again, rebuilding the roof, those are all LVLs. I literally have to slice off the top of the roof and incur any damage to the second floor, given we're going to get some rain now because of spring. Again, this is, would be a severe financial hardship here. But I'd certainly like to meet with engineering, with the building department. We can look at regrading, and again, we were looking at adding more fill to the west side because of the compaction, we can see it, we can see a portion of the window wells are exposed, that I don't necessarily want to have exposed, but yes, more, more than happy to meet with, with the village and engineering on this.
I'll ask corporation counsel, is that, is that something that's allowable in this particular situation?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
You think that's fine?
So long as everyone votes on it and agrees with petitioner, I would say. If one votes in majority in favor of a continuance, and if we set the date of the continuance, otherwise you have to re-mail notice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we would have to set a date, and so, anybody who's here would already be notified that, that it's a date, we have a date.
Sixty or ninety days out, you know, give them time.
Okay, so, so we could go ahead and do it. Would, and I'll ask this of staff, too, is it reasonable to assume that any sort of remedy could be done in that time to...
In what timeframe?
Sixty to ninety.
I would think thirty days.
Less than thirty.
I mean, it's going to depend on, part of it's going to depend on availability of staff meeting at the site with the petitioner, which I would assume could most likely be accomplished next week.
Yes.
Could a revised plan be drawn up? It's either, it's going to be two or four weeks. Now, the question, do we have, would we, because we're meeting tonight, there wouldn't be an issue if we met in two or four weeks, because it's, it's a date continued to a date certain, we have the date, so.
So, five weeks from today would be June 6th.
I, it's going to, part of it's going to depend on staff's availability to get three to four people out there at one time, which this week I know will not happen.
Yeah, and such short notice.
So, June 6th or 20.
And we would still be in compliance as far as, or is it...
Yeah, the notice would be fine, he's seeking a variance lesser than what he's requested here, so that's allowable.
Right, right, sure.
We just need to set it, that way you wouldn't have to re-mail all the notice.
Okay.
And they would have constructive notice of it.
Okay. All right. Is that something that the petitioner and staff can, can work out and see if we can come substantially more within compliance than, than what we see now?
Yeah, it depends on the date. Next, this week, I don't see being able to get multiple people out there. Next week, possibly, in the next two to three weeks, sure.
Okay. And, and the, and the work and all that can be accomplished within, within time for a, for that June meeting?
June, June 20.
I mean, if we're considering the first meeting in June, I think either next week or the week after, staff can meet out there if we come to an agreement, revised drawings. The petitioner would have to submit at least, you know, revised elevation at minimum, that engineering would still have to review and sign off on, and then building pending the zoning board, but to meet out there, make sure we're meeting the building codes, engineering's okay with grades, I think the prefer, I think staff's prefer will be the first meeting in June. This gives us enough time to meet, if we have to meet again, meet in the office, and meet a second time, we have plenty of time, we're not pushing it then.
Okay.
To get something revised, they have a revised staff report written also. I would feel comfortable with the first meeting in June.
Okay. Is that, is that me with your approval, too, Mr. Orzowski?
I'm ready to meet tomorrow, if that's what works for me.
All right. Corporation counsel, said?
That's fine with me, June 6th.
All right, June 6th. All right, then we will continue this case until June 6th and see if we can come within more substantial compliance with what the village's codes are. And so, we'll see you on June 6th then, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I recommend that at least send myself and Nathan Criskin email, just to say, you know, I'll talk to Nathan, I believe he's in tomorrow, he's been off the last couple The case was continued, would like to set up a meeting, I'll notify him, too, maybe start coming up with some ideas with the grade and some rough numbers.
I'll be out tomorrow morning to take a measure. We actually did take perimeter measurements, but again, that was several months ago.
Okay, let's get something current and...
So, we'll revisit it tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Okay. All right, good. Thank you very much, Mr. Orzowski, and thank you, staff.
We don't need to worry about them. Top continuation, we don't need to worry.
I know, it's okay.
Right. I don't mean to cause more work for you, but, you know, this is, yeah.
No, it's, you know, myself, Nathan, the building supervisor, Nathan Criskin, the building supervisor, at least one of the engineers, maybe another building inspector, at least three members of staff will be out there. If, again, email Nathan, give, come up with some numbers, do some measurements, and, you know, then we can meet at the site.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Gerson.
Brian, is, is there any room in the ordinance on height of an inch, two, three?
Technically, no. I would know that the, when the building inspectors go out and measure, I would assume if something measured at twenty-eight one, they would, they might feel it substantially in compliance, I don't know. But there's no, it's twenty-eight feet...
Period.
...in the code. I don't know, I can't tell you what all the building inspectors do on sites. I know I've measured fences when I do inspections, and there's slight grade differences, and if a fence measures five foot from grade at one point, or five foot, one inch at one point, I approve it, and I felt, you know, I feel it's substantially in compliance. If I measure a fence that's five foot six to five foot nine, I don't feel it's in compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, well, we have decided to continue this case to June 6th in order to see if the petitioner could come within greater compliance with the village ordinance, so, Mr. Orzowski, staff, will work on this, see if we can ameliorate the situation a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone have a great evening.
Yeah. That being said, we do not have a second case, which would have normally been May 16th, but we will have one on June 6th, so, as we just discussed. Anything else that anybody would like to bring, bring up on the board? If not, then this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is adjourned. Thank you.